Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Pearson and the Chartered Management Institute networking session. I'm Charlotte Bunne and I've also got my colleague here from the CMI Ruth Ding, who will be presenting shortly. Oh, there we go. Okay, let's go through first of all, the aims of the event today. So we're going to understand the role of the Chartered Management Institute and what they do. Understand how the CMI and Pearson have worked together in order to give you our offer for today. Explore the benefits to learners and lecturers of the CMI and Pearson offer, including the Foundation Chartered Manager status. Understand the administrative requirements that are associated with this offer. And you have the opportunity to ask questions, share ideas and network with your colleagues on the call today. There will be specific times when we are inviting questions, but that's not to say that you can't pop questions into the chat. So please feel free when they come up and we will ensure that those are answered as and when appropriate. We do also have Laura Hall here today, but she's having a few connection problems. But she's a sector manager for business, marketing and lots of our other enterprise and esports. So she will be on hand on the chats as well to answer any questions that are relevant for her. Okay, first of all, we're just going to have a little poll just to understand who we've got here today. So Roy, would you mind putting the poll up for me? So first of all, you'll be asked, what's your role in your centre? Which BTEC qualification you deliver? Whether you're familiar with the CMI? And also whether you are happy for the CMI to get in touch with you after the session today, if it's of interest to you. So we'll just give you a few more seconds because I can see that people are still typing, selecting their answers rather. Still got some movement. I'll just give people another 10, 10 seconds or so. Okay, so we've got a spread of people in roles in their centres. We've got a couple of assessors, majority of you, about half of you are teachers or lecturers. Some of you are entitled, I'm sure that's not true, but perhaps that's just, we haven't actually put your title on there. We've got one exams officer, a couple of internal verifiers, a few quality nominees. We've got 60% of you doing higher nationals. About quarter of you on our international programmes and the rest of you on our BTEC nationals. And Ruth, you'll be pleased to see that we've got over 90% who are happy for you to get in touch with them today. So thank you very much for that one. Thank you, Roy. I'm just going to close that one. We'll just share those results and then I will close that one down. Okay, I'm now going to hand over to Ruth from the CMI to take you through the majority of the session today because obviously the CMI is why you are here to understand the partnership with Pearson. Thanks very much, Ruth.
Thank you, Charlotte, and hello, everybody. Thank you so much for attending this morning. We really appreciate your time. Hopefully you will find this a useful conversation and as Charlotte said, we're very open to questions. My role is to give you an introduction to CMI and to our partnership, particularly with Pearson, and how that can benefit you. So as Charlotte said, my name is Ruth Ding. I'm Head of Customer and Product Propositions at CMI. I'm responsible for the development of all of our products and services and our qualifications and our marketing as well. Are people struggling to hear me? Violet is saying she cannot hear. Anybody else having problems? Oh, good, okay. Thank you, people, thank you. So for those of you not familiar with CMI, we are the Chartered Professional Body for Management Leadership. So it's the Chartered Management Institute or CMI. For over 70 years, we have worked with businesses and education to inspire people to become skilled, confident and successful managers and leaders. As a chartered body, we're the only professional body that can award Chartered Manager status. And this is the highest accolade for managers and leaders. And it's awarded to those managers and leaders who demonstrate real best practice and impact in their workplace and in their organisation. So moving on to the next slide, just to give you an idea of our mission, vision and values. So everything that we do is underpinned by our vision. We are a charity, we're a not-for-profit organisation. And our vision is to increase the number of better-led and managed organisations. We do this by increasing the number and standard of professionally qualified managers and leaders. So our purpose, our little tagline is that we are turning accidental managers, a phrase which I'm sure you are all familiar with and have probably experienced throughout your working lives, into conscious leaders. We're a membership organisation, so we have a global community of over 160,000 managers. We have awarded up to date over 11,500 Chartered Manager state awards. We work currently with over 850, sorry, education providers, employers and universities. And many of you may already be an approved CMI centre. And at the moment, we have over 97,000 learners currently studying CMI qualification or a management leadership apprenticeship for which we are one of the endpoint assessment organisations. And those qualifications range from levels two to level eight. Moving on, everything that we do is underpinned by this lovely wheel here, which is our professional standard. And this sets out the best practice in management leadership. And we have developed this in consultation with leaders from across a wide range of industries and sectors. So it demonstrates really what employers are looking for in their workforce at every level. And this circle sort of shows you the high-level sections of the standard. And behind it sits a detailed competency framework. And that sets out the specific competencies required at all career levels from very, very beginning right through to strategic and C-suite level. And the point of this is it underpins everything we do. It underpins our qualifications, it underpins the apprenticeships that we run, it underpins the Foundation Chartered Manager status that we're going to talk about in a bit, and obviously Chartered Manager status. And the idea is that this really sets a good benchmark that all managers and leaders can use to benchmark themselves. It also means employers can use this to benchmark their teams or their workforce to make sure that they are demonstrating best practice and that they understand what good looks like. So before we drill down to the sort of detail of why we're here, I just wanted to give you a bit of broader context on some of the research that us and others have carried out and why we think this relationship with Pearson and the partnership with yourselves will really benefit you and your learners. So we know that employers report skills shortages that are driven by a lack of core skills. And the 2019 Employer Skills Survey found the lack of management and leadership skills contributed to around six in 10 of those core skills gaps. We know obviously that core skills are vital for productivity. And the Government's Business Productivity Review in November 19 showed that strong leadership and management practices are strongly correlated to firm-level productivity, with even tiny amounts or tiny improvements in management practices being associated to up to a 5% increase in a business's productivity. So we know management leadership is obviously crucial to businesses and their productivity. Those surveys are obviously from 2019 before the pandemic hit us. And of course, this has impacted everybody in very different ways. And a poll that we ran in April 20 found that the skills gaps that managers reported among their staff that had been exposed by COVID-19 were predominantly in areas such as communication, digital and management skills. And I'm sure you'll all recognise and agree that managing change, for example, is one of the key skills that we've all had to certainly develop and been tested on over the last year or so. And then just at the bottom there, a little bit closer to home, we've got a lot of insights that we ourselves have carried out research on, but also independent research as to the impact of CMI accreditation and CMI membership on individuals and on employers. And you can see there that 84% of students across our providers have said that CMI accreditation has influenced their decision to apply for the course. And that's obviously relevant to this conversation, which is about how can this benefit you in the promotion of your courses? And that Chartered Manager status, we know boosts revenue of businesses by approximately £310,000 over five years. So there's a few high-level stats for you there. So how are we working with Pearson? So going on to the next slide, you will see that we have mapped, so we have aligned these following BTECs. So BTEC Level 3, some international Level 3 BTECs and some higher nationals at Levels 4 and 5. And we have mapped these against that professional standard that I showed you. And what we found in these particular BTECs is that they actually include a lot of the core skills that we know managers lead and that that research shows that managers and employers want, which is great news because it means that we can align these qualifications to our professional standard and that we can award anybody completing these qualifications, CMI membership and our Foundation Chartered Manager status. And I think the other thing, just to point out, is that we're not just looking at business, you know, hospitality, travel and tourism, health and social care. These all include some of those core skills. And of course, management leadership cuts across all sectors. And it's absolutely right that it should be included in every subject. So I will talk a bit more about Foundation Chartered Manager, just I think on the next slide, and then come on to a bit more detail as to the benefits of the partnership to you and your learners. So Foundation Chartered Manager is a reasonably new status that we introduced probably two years ago, recognising that individuals, we needed to create a sort of progression pathway for individuals into full Chartered Manager status. So full Chartered Manager status requires a certain level of management experience. Foundation Chartered Manager is a professional status and it's designed for aspiring or early-career managers. And this recognises the knowledge that has been attained through a qualification where those individuals have yet to actually have the opportunity to apply that knowledge in the workplace, either at all or to any great extent. So it's for aspiring managers or certainly very new managers. But it recognises the knowledge that they have gained. It aligns to the early-career stages of the professional standard. And more information about that is on our website. And the idea is that by giving people this status and this opportunity, they are then in a position to continue their professional development. The communications that they get are tailored to their needs and it sets them on a progression pathway, ideally obviously to full Chartered status. So for BTEC learners specifically, for those programmes listed, they are all eligible for Foundation Chartered Manager status on completion of their programme. It can either be claimed directly by the learner once they've completed or, and as we'll go on to discuss, if your centre becomes a CMI recognised partner, it then is automatically awarded to all learners on your BTEC programme. And I'll come on to talk about that in a little bit. And you can see there, and we'll discuss this in a bit more detail, that on completion, they are given three months free membership of the CMI. They have post-nominals after their names. They then go on to get an additional 12 months of membership at a reduced rate. And there are tailored communications that help them to continue their professional development. So we are really, really delighted to be working in partnership with Pearson. We're actually working with Pearson on a number of different initiatives. We've been working in partnership for, gosh, about two and a half, three years now. It's a great partnership, it's a really, really positive partnership. And I'm sure you'll agree, there are real benefits to being linked to two really key reputable players in the field of education. So two routes, this sort of gets into the detail now. So two routes for achieving this Foundation Chartered Manager status. I'll do the second one first actually, because this is for those who are either existing learners and quite far into their courses or have already completed and are alumni. And individual learners who can demonstrate or evidence that they have already got a BTEC in those courses are able to claim Foundation Chartered Manager by coming to CMI directly, producing a copy of their certificate and completing a very brief form. And we will then award them Foundation Chartered Manager status. The main route that I want to talk to you all about today is about how you can embed this into your programme from the very beginning. And you do that by becoming a CMI recognised partner. Some of you may already have experience of this with us. And this is then about expanding that out to incorporate these programmes as well. So obviously you remain a Pearson partner because you need to deliver their BTECs, the BTECs, but you add CMI to your list of partners. This gives you and your staff, as well as all the learners, access to all the fantastic CMI resources right from the beginning of the programme. So you can actually use the resources to support the delivery of your programme as well as the learners being able to access them independently. The students and the delivery staff become members of CMI, access to all of our fantastic resources, including our online resource portal, Management Direct, which is a real flagship product. It contains tens of thousands of pieces of digital content aligned to all the key topics and core skills. It includes loads and loads of practical tools and templates, models, management models, et cetera, real-world case studies, et cetera. As a member, you also have access to many, many digital online events, eventually face-to-face events as we start rolling those out again. There is a mentoring service that is available to all members as well and a career development service that gives individuals access to specific tools. I think hopefully you'll agree, membership of a chartered body, and I showed some stats earlier about the benefits to individuals and how it informs their decision-making. But this gives you as a centre, a real unique selling point when marketing your course to those individuals and the decision-makers. So once you are a recognised partner, there is a per learner fee of £25 per learner. This is normally actually £150, but because of our partnership with Pearson, we have reduced this to £25 per learner. That is paid by you as the centre, either you embed that into the fees that you are charging the learners or you obviously look to sort of take that on yourselves. And that includes that whole membership package. So it's incredible value, I have to say. And that's for the duration of the course. So however long the BTEC runs for, that £25 is all you pay for that learner for the duration of the course. I'll come on to other, there are some other one-off costs as well, but I'll come on to those in a minute. This is about what the learner gets as part of that. You don't pay anything for your staff, membership, that's all included in the partnership agreement. So you are then able to use CMI branding and collateral to attract your learners. You can embed it into your marketing and your promotional materials. As I said, the CMI membership is for the duration of the programme. And on completion, the individuals get a CMI certificate of achievement, the Foundation Chartered Manager status, which can, the certificate can be dual-branded with your logo if that's something you would like. And they then get an additional three months' membership and a reduced rate of membership for the next 12 months. Huge value for money. And very happy, obviously, to have more detailed discussions with individual centres if you are interested. And we've got, we'll put the contact details up on the last slide.
Ruth, can I just, sorry, can I, we've got a couple of questions just based on that slide. So it's probably easier to address it now, if that's okay. So Justina was asked, for existing learners or alumni, is there an individual cost for students?
No, so the cost is really giving you that, that cost is to cover the sort of access to everything for the duration of the course. For those learners that are just independently claiming, there's no cost to them until they hit that sort of membership conversion piece.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. And then Kevin's asked, he works for a distance learning centre in Liverpool. I believe Hope University are already affiliated with CMI. Is there a limit on the number of recognised partners per geographical area?
There isn't, no. And if you are already affiliated, I mean, depending on what your existing agreement is, then obviously that impacts how we then manage extending or adding to our existing partnership contractual agreement and contractual agreements. And that would be an individual conversation to have.
Okay. Dahlia has asked about, is there a webpage for us to inform learners that they can claim the Foundation Chartered Manager free for three months upon course completion? I think we're going to come on to that.
Yeah, and there's a link in the last slide to that.
Lovely. Are the students able to keep their status if they don't choose to continue with their membership after three months?
No, and that is a very good question. So foundation, I mean, any chartered status is obviously dependent on them retaining their membership of CMI. So they would be expected to retain their membership of CMI in order to retain their status. And that would be the same for Chartered Manager status as well.
Lovely. And the £25 per learner, does this cover their HND, Year 1, HNC and Year 2 HND? Or does the centre have to pay £25 per year of the course?
So no, the £25 is for the duration of the programme. So it's a fee that is paid at the very beginning in order to access all of those resources. And that's it. But I'll come on, there is, well, I can come on to this next actually. There is a one-off approval fee because we obviously have to go through various steps to actually approve. It's probably on a later slide, but I'm happy to mention it now. So there is a one-off approval fee for the centre, as there would be, you know, for any organisation. And that's up to £1,000. And there is then an annual approval fee where we just ensure that we have to do various QA checks, et cetera, to make sure that the provider is continuing to deliver as agreed. And that's up to £1,000 as well.
Lovely. I think we can continue because the other questions are based on resources, which I know we're coming to a little bit later. Thanks, Ruth.
That's great. Okay, thank you. So I've listed some of the other benefits here. Attracting learners, I mean, this gives you such a unique selling point. It's a great partnership, as I've already mentioned. I think, oh, sorry, just going back to that slide. I think really key that I've added here, there is no additional assessment. This is not us, this is a recognised or an endorsement, this is not accreditation. There is obviously a difference. So there's no additional assessment, there's no additional work for the individual or for you to do. This is really about giving those individuals that extra opportunity and access to all of those amazing resources and having that membership of the professional body. And obviously you being able to use our branding in order to market and promote. And then for the individuals, we've already talked about some of the benefits and I've just put them there again, links to improved employability, helping them to stand out from other BTEC graduates who perhaps have not got that CMI endorsement and that CMI certification. And I can't remember if this goes on, I think it does. In fact, I think I've got another list of benefits, but one of them is we have access, they have access to a career development centre that gives them all sorts of things like access to CV writing tools, interview skills, some really good employment skills, resources, that again can help to complement and enhance things that you may already be offering those learners as they start to enter the world of work or progress their existing career. I see some other questions, let me just see. Is the CMI memberships for all teaching staff in school or only those who deliver the BTEC? So it's for those that are delivering the specific programme that we're related, that we're talking about. But we can be quite flexible and have those conversations with you individually. So moving on to, I think, how to claim. This is the individuals, so this was just a brief slide to show how simple it is for the individuals and the link is included in the last slide. So for an individual just claiming this on completion, we can help you promote this to your alumni and we can send you, we've got some collateral that we can send you to promote, either when their results go out or as they're leaving or whatever, you know, whatever you want to do. And they are then signposted to the CMI website, they complete a very simple form. We then just validate the qualification and then award them the status. And as per that question, yes, individuals must retain their membership. And there's a quote here from Corey from the Dorset Local Enterprise Partnership. "On completing my learning, my experience and membership with CMI helped me to think outside of the academic environment. Access to a wealth of management material and CPD resources gave me the skill set to adapt to the working environment. This is the value of being a CMI member, you've become a well-rounded professional and not just an academic." So that employability side is really important to people. I'm going to answer just the next couple of questions and then we'll move into another poll. How can a teaching staff gain and claim the status? So you can contact us directly for that if you are eligible. And what is the minimum BTEC qualification needed to claim Foundation Manager? So the BTEC qualifications are those that we listed in the earlier slide. It's also on the Pearson website and we'll put links in obviously to this. And you'll get sent a recording of the slides. So Roy, I'm going to go over to you to run a couple more polls, please. So I think, I can't see these, but hopefully the questions are up and the questions are, do you think your benefits would, learners, sorry, would benefit from the resources offered by CMI? And would you be interested in more information on becoming a CMI recognised partner?
I've just shared the results, Ruth, I don't know if you can see them.
I can't see, no, I can't actually.
No problem. Yeah, of course, yep. So 96% have said that their learners would benefit and 91% are interested in having more information about becoming a recognised partner. So that's great news.
That's great. And just another quick question, is there a limit on the alumni who are eligible? So as long as they have completed that version of the qualification that we've shown, I can't remember what the dates are on them, but as long as they have completed that qualification, then they are eligible for to claim status. So I think, are they 2018? I don't know if Laura or Charlotte.
16, 2016, yeah.
So as long as they've got that, they've completed that qualification. Thanks, Laura. Okay, so last little bit from me, moving on to the next slide. So becoming a recognised partner, so I've mentioned the fees that are involved. So there is an approval process, it's very, very light touch. We've actually done all the mapping to the programmes themselves, which would normally be a part of that approval process. So we've already done that, so that, so we have reduced the fee accordingly. And again, because of the partnership with Pearson. But there is an approval process and fee. You do become a contracted partner, so there is an agreement that you would sign. And then there's an ongoing, then there's an annual approval fee, as I mentioned. And those fees are up to £1,000 a year. If you are an existing partner, then those fees do not apply. So that is a good question, thank you. And then, as I mentioned, there is this £25 fee per learner, which is usually £150. So we have, if you are interested, obviously we'd have a more detailed conversation with you. And as I said, you benefit from access to the CMI resources for your teaching staff on these programmes and your learners. And that includes all these listed here, which I've mentioned now, I think, probably multiple times. So the Management Direct Portal, the Career Development Centre that I mentioned, which is an amazing resource, online events and webinars, and obviously Foundation Chartered Manager status. So I'm sure there is loads more that we could discuss. I've talked probably at you now for long enough. And just wanting to summarise on the last or penultimate slide, on the next slide, just the key takeaways really. Oh, all. Just the key takeaways really, all numbered one. So the BTECs, as we've said, those BTECs listed have been mapped to our professional standard. There is an option for you to become a full CMI recognised partner to fully benefit from this and give you a competitive edge. And Foundation Chartered Manager status is available for all of your learners. And we do know that this enhances employability and makes your programme all the more attractive. And just a last quote here, oh, let me just go to that quote, sorry Charlotte, from, thank you, at Manchester University, Manchester Met. Employability is improved together with our reputation and much of this, I believe, is down to our partnership with the CMI. So the last slide is just how to get in touch. There is more information, that link will take you to the Foundation Charter Manager page for the individuals. Please contact me directly for more information on how to become a full partner. And I will put you in touch with one of our brilliant team to talk in more detail. And we will follow up with those of you that have said they have to be contacted with a little bit more information. So we're open for questions and we've answered a lot. There's another question here from Judith. Does it include hospitality level three? Yes, it does. I think that should be on that list. Will the £25 fee go back up to £150? No, you are locked into that fee as part of this partnership with Pearson. Oh, somebody, Tanya, can't actually link to the chat. If anybody wants to unmute and ask a question directly, please feel free to.
There's a couple bit further up, Ruth. I think they've just sort of got a bit lost it because we've had so many. Somebody's asked if they can have a sample of the CMI resources.
So, yeah, so we can certainly, when we contact you, when we contact you after this, if you said you have to be contacted, we will, as part of that, send you a link to our website where you can find more information about the resources.
And if learners are only doing the HNC, does this still all apply?
Yes. So this applies to all levels of that specific qualification, absolutely. And we were very clear, when we did the mapping, we mapped the core modules. So that obviously anybody that has completed those core modules, this was eligible for them.
And is the centre fee calculated per learner or per size of centre?
So the centre fee, the approval fee is a one-off standalone fee regardless of the centre or how many learners you have. And that's about covering the costs to us. The individual fee obviously is the £25 and that's obviously per learner.
And is the CMI membership for all teaching staff in school or only those who deliver the BTEC qualifications?
Yeah, so I think I answered that earlier, but yes, it's for those that are delivering the specific qualifications. But we can be flexible in that and talk to you about who you need to access.
Okay. And is there a time limit from qualifying to applying for membership?
No, as long as they have the, so if you are a recognised partner, if you sign up to us as a recognised partner, it's automatically awarded on completion. So there's nothing the individual has to do if they've done this as part of the recognised partnership. Once your learners, once that cohort has completed, we would automatically award them. If an individual is applying directly, then like I say, as long as they can demonstrate that they have got that qualification, then they can do that whenever they want.
Okay. What does the marketing support consist of?
So again, depending on which route you go down. So if this is just about promoting it to individuals, then we would just send you some collateral that you could share. So some leaflets, digital leaflets, obviously links to the website. And we have a dedicated webpage for those individuals. As a recognised partner, you have access to, you're able to use our logo, the CMI branding on your website. You can promote this in, you know, all of your brochures, collateral, however you do it. So there's a lot more available to you as a recognised partner.
And I think that's it apart from, somebody's just asked, because the link isn't clickable on their version of the slide. So I'm not sure if we're able to put the CMI link in the chat perhaps, Ruth?
Oh, I see. Yeah. So I think when you get sent this slide deck, that link will be clickable. I think it's just because it's.
Because it's, yeah, it's probably a PDF they've perhaps got.
Yeah, which is being shared on the screen unless you've already got it. So there is, yes, so someone said the CMI website is quite complicated, oh dear, it shouldn't be. But there is, yes, there is a link and I'm happy to share this. I need to come out of this and share it, but I'm happy to share it on the chat.
Okay.
I should have one of my team on here, I don't know, Vicky, if you can share that.
Hi Ruth, yes Rebecca here, I've already shared it in the chat, the link from that piece there.
Thank you so much.
Sorry Rebecca, missed that one.
Yes, more questions. Anishka, I'd love to be contacted, our centre is international. We're running fantastic, yep, no, and please feel free to contact me directly or certainly one of our team will be in touch. Do we need to be a registered CMI tutor to be able to offer this service or would it be covered? You don't, you need, I mean, so if you are delivering the BTEC as part of, as a Pearson centre, you don't, no, you don't need to be a registered CMI tutor. And it is all covered in the partnership agreement, absolutely. Fantastic. So somebody has mentioned the Pearson site doesn't list the Level Three Extended Diploma in Health and Social Care as being eligible, whereas the earlier slide did. So it should, it, it, it. Yeah, all levels of the qualification are eligible, so I don't know if that's been missed. So I think that's all the questions unless there's anything else from anybody.
Hi Ruth, this is Rohit, I have a specific question, can I ask?
Yes, of course.
Ruth, as an existing CMI partner, we deliver Fives and Seven Levels here, and Three as well. And alongside that, we deliver HND, HNC as well. So as a centre, as a programme leader, how should I claim this status for my current students?
So if you're an existing CMI centre, we just talked to you about extending that agreement into becoming a recognised partner, if that's what you're looking to do, and we just extend that partnership agreement, right?
And for that, I have to get in touch with the quality manager or directly with you?
You can, I'm happy for you to get in touch with me directly and then we can, we can field that to the right place. Who is your quality manager, do you know?
I think it's Helen. Helen, I'm not sure about the last name.
And do you? And which centre is it?
It's a university centre, St Helens.
Okay. I can follow up afterwards with Helen on your behalf and we'll be.
Brilliant, brilliant. And can I ask you a quick second question? For the marketing collateral, who do I contact? Is it directly the marketing or again with you?
Again, you can come via me, but I can include that in all the, in the follow-up.
Wonderful. Thanks. Thanks, brilliant, cheers.
Okay. How do lecturers get membership? I need membership as a lecturer. So if you're an existing centre and deliver on either a CMI qualification or if you're interested in becoming a recognised partner and you're delivering on the BTEC qualification, then as part of your agreement, we would make sure that you had membership, CMI membership. The partnership will only allow us to have access to the CMI resources. Will there be any available courses for our learners or any kind of assessments? So, I mean, CMI separately has a wealth of other qualifications, as I mentioned earlier, that you obviously can, can talk to us about. I'm not sure I fully understand the question. There's no additional assessment for this, from CMI, for this particular partnership? If that's what you mean, it's from Rania. I don't know if I've answered that well enough or if you want to elaborate. If you do, yes, I think if you do have any additional questions, please, please just get in touch. And I'm very happy to talk through in more detail with you individually. Okay. So Charlotte or Alia, I'm right, aren't I, that a copy of these slides or recording of this will be going out? Will a copy of the slides go out as part of that?
I don't see why we can't do that. You know, we don't normally do, but we can do it if that's okay with everybody. I will just double check that with Alia, but I'm sure she will advise further. But definitely a recording.
If not, I think the issue here is whether, is how to get those, is to make sure they can.
It's the links.
Yeah. So I think it's just making sure that everybody can access the links, isn't it?
Yeah. And even if we can just get the slides with the links to you, I'm sure that will be absolutely fine.
Perfect. Brilliant. So if there is nothing else, is there anything else from my Pearson colleagues?
Does anybody want to call out if we haven't answered any of their questions? Do they want to just come off mute and ask us? Because there's a lot of chat and I'm just anxious we haven't missed anything.
Hi Laura, can you hear me? It's Judith Grandjean, Bournemouth and Paul College. Hi, can I just get clarification on the qualifications? There was somebody else put it in the chat as well. Lovely Ruth is saying one thing, but the slide is saying something else. And actually the Pearson website says something else. So actual clarification, watertight clarification of the qualifications that it sits with would be wonderful. So we know exactly where we're going. And the fee of £25 presumably, CMI, you invoice the centre and repay accordingly. Is that right?
Yeah. So the list of qualifications, I mean, we will go and double check, double, triple check, obviously. The website should absolutely be correct. We will make sure.
I know where the issue's coming, the issue's coming with health and social care. And the discussion around health and social care within the UK team was that a student at Level Three will not be management ready because of the hierarchy of jobs that you go into from a Level Three. But CMI recognise some of the content as being suitable for management, charter management, foundations, sorry, foundations. Yes, yeah. So it's something that I will take back to the team.
Right, okay. The other one is I raised the question about the BTEC Level Three Hospitality. There is a BTEC Level Three Extended Diploma in Hospitality, but it's not mentioned. But yet the BTEC International Hospitality is mentioned, that's a different qual altogether. That's not a UK-based one per se, whereas business and tourism.
Is that the tech level?
No, it's the QCF, Level Three BTEC Extended Diploma, QCF qual, that's still exist.
I think it's the international version that has been approved by CMI. Ruth and I will have a look at the one that you're referring to.
Right, okay.
I know exactly what you're talking about. It's the QCF that's missing. Yeah, so that's possibly an oversight from our point of view in terms of that list.
Okay, so it's just I'm learning manager for all those areas except health and social care. So I want to make sure that I can actually brand accordingly and capture all our students with CMI membership. And it's only when they've completed their extended, isn't it? So it's the two-year, three A level equivalents that you're going with.
Well, in some of them, yes, but in business, no, it's all sizes of business.
Okay, okay.
But, which is really important note.
It's all sizes of all of them, because we only, we only mapped the core qualifications. I think it's all sizes of all of them that we've matched.
Well, it's definitely all sizes of business. Ruth, you and I need to just clarify and send that through.
There's been so much mapping Judith going on.
Yeah, I can imagine. I just want to be, before I start launching this to in excess of whatever amount of students I've got, that I'm absolutely watertight and they don't come back and go, you promised us this and they haven't been got it though.
And we will make sure that the definitive information is on the Pearson website. So that's where it should absolutely be.
Right, that's lovely. Yeah.
Sorry Laura.
I was just going to say thanks for raising that. We just need to just go back and double check. Because there is, there is a lot of different qualifications, both QCF, RQF, national and international and sizes. So we'll go back and just confirm that for you.
Right, that's lovely. Thanks for that.
And your question, I think Judith, about the £25 is, yes, when you enter into an agreement with CMI, yes, we then will invoice you for the learners that you register.
Okay. And that's at the, they can register, we can register them at the beginning. So they've accessed all the resources, but they let us off to the name and everything, don't come until the end and they've then completed.
That's absolutely correct. Yeah, absolutely.
Right, okay. I think I'm there now. Thank you very much.
And Judith, very happy to have a more detailed conversation.
Yeah, you probably will be hearing from me Ruth, don't worry. Okay, thanks.
Really quick question. My name is Mukala from Eastside College. I wanted to know with the Level Three Nationals, what is the duration for the, you know, CMI status, Foundation Status Qualification?
Sorry, I didn't quite catch the middle of your question. Say that again, please.
Yes, I wanted to know the duration, would I find, who have a foundation, I mean, Level Three programmes here, what are the Year Ones and Year Twos? Now, assuming somebody completes the Year One and wants to jump on to this programme, what is the duration?
So, I mean, so from our point of view, the, it's the duration of the programme. So if you're asking about the eligibility, it's whatever, however long your programme takes, that's how long. The £25 covers the duration of the programme and it's on completion of that programme that they are awarded. Is that the question?
All right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you very much.
Hi, I have a quick question, if that's okay?
Yeah, of course, Tanya, yeah.
Okay. So I'm from the International School of Monaco. We, sorry, I'm in the middle of a class. We deliver the Level Three International Diploma in Business, but we offer the Enterprise and Entrepreneurship Suite of Units, which comes under Business. Is the CMI Foundation mapped to the Enterprise Suite of Units as well as the Business one? Because they are a different group of units.
I think the answer to that is going to be the same as the previous question, which I need to clarify that with Ruth and to get back. I don't really see a reason why they wouldn't be, because obviously there are some similarities in Enterprise. They're going to be developing a lot of those similar skills. So can we get back to you on that?
Yeah, definitely. No problem at all. I'll wait for you to get back and we'll talk about this further.
That applies to the UK and Enterprise as well. Thanks.
Lovely, thank you.
There are a couple more questions in the chat that have come up in the chat, I think. So there's one with regards, we register our learners on Travelling Tourism Level Three Foundation Diploma and then they have a top-up registration to Year Two. I'm assuming that means to the Extended Diploma, which is obviously on our list. But does that mean that they're able to access the resources and the chartered status within the first year when?
So I think again, if they are completing that qualification and that's, and like we've said, we will absolutely confirm definitively what, which ones we've done and Rebecca has confirmed that on the Pearson website, the Higher Nationals are correct. And I do think they are correct on the website. So as long as they are completing that qualification and that's, the evidence is that they've completed, then yes, they would be eligible for that first year.
Okay.
And there was another question from John. Is the membership on an individual basis? So if some students would like it and invoice can be raised for just some students to have it if they wish. So that is possible, it becomes a lot more complicated. So we, our usual way of working with a centre is that the whole cohort becomes, becomes, become members of the CMI. Otherwise you end up with quite a lot of inconsistency within that individual cohort. But again, we can have a more detailed conversations to your requirements, John. Fantastic. So I think probably if there is nothing else and we haven't missed anything, yell if we've missed any questions. If not, please feel free to contact me directly. We will follow up anyway for those that have said. We will follow up anyway for those that have said that they're willing to hear from us with, with more information. And I'm really looking forward to hopefully starting some new partnerships with you. Thank you everybody very much.
Thanks Ruth, thank you.